Do you have a quorum?
Madam President, I'd like to report the following actions from closed session. Let's see. First, we ratified the Chancellor's approval to appoint Gregory Granderson as the interim dean of Academic and Student Affairs at Laney College from February 9, 2015, to May 8, 2015, at $128,969 on a vote of seven ayes, zero noes, extensions or absence. And that's how all these votes came, so just repeat that part for the next two parts. We approve the recommendation to appoint LaSana Hotep as the interim dean of Student Success and Equity in the district office effective February 18, 2015, through September 30, 2015, or until the position is filled on a regular basis at a salary of $118,651. And we approve the recommendation to extend the appointment of Petrol Shelton as the interim director of Deputy Sector Navigator Program. That's a mouthful. It's a grant-funded position at the College of Alameda from December 24, 2014, through June 30, 2015, at $98,016. If any of these individuals is present, could you stand? Well, we will applaud in your absence. Oh, we're here, okay. Welcome, Board, and our continuation. Thank you very much. That's all I have from closed session.
Can the recipients or the new appointees please stand up and speak your name, please, briefly? Thank you. Any others? The next item we have is approval of the agenda, and I believe we have a correction, item 31, page 2, change order number 1. Board approved date says November 18, 2015, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, through the Deputy Chancellor Gravenberg, Vice Chancellor Ikaro, should that be 11/18/2014? Thirty-one. Eighteenth, 2015, and we're presuming that the date would be 2015.
It's 2014.
Twenty-fourteen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the correction.
There's another correction that was forwarded to us by the Associated Student Government of Merritt College regarding the discussion on student funds. And as I understand the message, and of course, the students can repeat and clarify during the student government reports, but I believe that that process is still underway in discussions and has not been concluded. Sorry, that's a minutes discussion, not an agenda correction.
You would correct it.
All right. So then, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any items that are being pulled for discussion from the consent calendar to the action calendar?
I think item number 11 may be pulled.
Item number 11. Item number 11 has been pulled and moved to the subsequent board meeting on February 24th, which is also a board retreat. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I think.
Move seconded, all in favor? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is...
I'm sure, I think that Trustee Handy had...
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Handy has an item.
There were sixteen for discussion.
Item number 16.
For discussion.
Did I get that right, 16?
Sixteen for discussion.
Sixteen. Madam Clerk, could you make a note of item 16, pulled for discussion?
Okay.
Other than that amendment to the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item 14 for discussion, please, that consider approval of the Measure A Laney College instructional classroom wireless project upgrade.
These automatically go to the action agenda, correct?
That's right.
Yes, yes.
So we have 16, 14, and 11.
Yes.
Okay.
Other than that amendment, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
So move. For necessary corrections.
We have a comment from Trustee Oliver.
Yeah, there was a correction. It said that I was disappointed that the student government funds was going to be on the agenda, and I said it wasn't. But, I don't know, for some reason, he said that I was excited it was going to be on the agenda, but, or I was disappointed that it was, and it wasn't on the agenda. Just a correction.
Okay. I support that with necessary corrections.
And then, of course, the comment earlier regarding the Merritt College students correction that was sent to us. With those corrections, do we have a motion? We have moved and seconded for approval of the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is the public communication. Do we have any...
Actually, Madam President, I'm going to abstain on that last vote because I realized I wasn't present at the meeting. Thank you. On the approval of the minutes. I wasn't here for the open session.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
I was here for closed session, and then I went home quite ill.
That's right, I'm sorry, Nikki. I knew that I'd seen you. All right, so with Trustee Gonzalez-Guen's abstention, we have a vote to approve the minutes. The next item is the public communication. Do we have any speaker cards?
We only have speaker card for item 14, no public comment cards. Is that correct? Brenna? That is correct, no public comment cards?
One.
One. I've got one for item 14, but nothing in public. Okay, thank you. Stand corrected. Thank you. I think Mr. James Blake.
I don't know who it is, must be press.
Madam President, we have one public speaker, Mr. James Blake.
But that's a press spot, that's a press spot.
Good evening, Board, administrators, faculty and staff, audience. The reason why I'm here today is that over the past month or so, I not only became, I'm not, I'm a staff member, but I also became a student of Peralta. One of my challenges of being a student was trying to get in through the passport portal from the student entry point and had many difficulties trying to navigate through that. The only way I was able to enroll after two and a half weeks was to have someone backdoor me in, both the admission and records, and also onto the little site, which left me ultimately three weeks behind the classroom activities. I contacted district administration, those who are responsibility over that area, and found that, you know, if I had problems, I wondered what's happening with our students. And after some due course in action, they did find that there was a glitch in the portal that led to my particular problem, but I'm led to believe that this also has impacted many other students who tried to enroll, completed their application but were not able to sign up for classes. And this is something we need to address quickly because it's impacting our enrollment, and it seemed like every time we go through this period, we have some sort of snafu that has a negative impact. My other concern is that, the reason why we're here, trustee, now councilman, about Guian stated here a while ago about why we're here in terms of serving students and why it's important. But I think sometimes we've lost our way because we are putting too much effort into personal pursuits and personal agendas and not placing students first. One of the things that is concerning me as a leader, as a classified Senate president, is that we have money that's been allocated to serve students, but we seem to be beyond our wits to spend it. And it's creating a lot of frustration for me as being an employee of Peralta and seeing that we have resources that we are not being able to get to students as quickly as possible. I don't care why the reasons are, it's just that that is very frustrating for me as a person who supports students. And I feel that we should take a look in terms of our processes and how we're making our decisions and finding a better way to make sure that when funds are allocated for students, that we dispense those funds in the most expedient way possible so that it can benefit them. And I hope that as you consider these other agenda items and other things, to keep that in mind, because I find it troubling that with the parcel tax, with other funds, we have money that we have not spent down. And those monies are dedicated to really helping and assisting our students, and I hope we can really address this issue. Thank you.
Do we have any further public comment?
No, we don't.
Our next item is the Associated Student Government Reports. Could you state your name, please, and your college?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Imong Lee from Berkeley City College. I'm here to represent ASBCC. Today, I just wanted to give my report on three things: previous events, new events that are coming up that we're planning for, and what we're doing to prepare for accreditation. So, for the previous events, four students from our ASBCC and are going to, went to Campus Camp Wellstone where they got training on leadership skills. Previous events, Civic Engagement Club had a really good blood drive, they got a lot of donations. Black History Month, it's almost over, we're going to have some events coming up next week and this week. And the new events are coming up. So, ASBCC is taking lead on to the Student Success Day, which will occur in mid-April. What we're doing is, we're going to invite all high schools, local high schools, to come to the school and get their educational plan, their assessment, and their campus tour, which is very exciting because the students will get a chance to meet all the departments and learn about how to navigate the system in community college. The LGBTQIA club, which is called Gay Street Alliance, will have a partnership with La Clinica de Colores to have an event on LGBTQIA Awareness Week. So, the third thing that I want to talk about is the preparation for accreditation that ASBCC is doing. So, what we're doing, it's just cleaning up our website, making sure all our minutes are up, and other things like aesthetic value to our school, we're trying to clean up everything that we can, all the poster boards, making sure that everything is aesthetically prepared for accreditation. So that's about it for our report. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Presidents and public. My name is Adrian Jackson, I'm ASMC Senator, and I'm pleased to be present on behalf of the ASMC. At our February 9th ASMC meeting, we voted on paying for snacks, water, and flowers for our graduation. ASMC voted to charter a new club entitled Citizens for Education. The inner club council now has 23 active clubs and four pending. The inner club council and ASMC sponsored a second club rush. Our first club rush was very successful. We've hosted a second one today from 5:00 to 6:30 to reach out to evening students. They will be providing evening snacks also. ASMC voted to increase the scholarships for students on campus. ASMC scholarships were six categories, and we have voted to add two more categories and include athletes and student leadership. ASMC will award two recipients per category for a total of 16 scholarships totaling $4,000. New club ability counts in ASMCs are co-sponsoring an event to support Black History Month on February 19th in the HUFP Newton Student Lounge. Speaker Milton Boyens, painter, educator, and speaker, Mauricio Gabriel. Five Thirty Kappa had two fundraisers, photo booth and book sale. Overall, student activities and campus life has increased. Community resources and four institutions provide resources for campus life. Student activities have also developed a process for students to schedule for ASMC chambers to use now. This past weekend, we're grateful, we are happy to say that we hosted the 14th Annual Black Caucus of California Community Colleges Conference, and it was a success. And thanks to the BSU and ASMC for co-hosting. We had Assembly Member Rob Bonter, 18th District. We had Mayor Libby Schaeff, she came in, or Schaff, I think. Holly Mitchell, Senator, from 3rd District. So, it was a success. And also, we want to let you know that the Black Caucus appreciates the use of the campus, and it really turned out well. We had approximately 50 students from different areas of California. Thank you.
State your name, although we already know it.
Good evening, Marlene Hurd, Associate Student at Merritt College, Senator and Representative of the Peralta Merritt College Tobaccoheads Club. I wanted to also mention that our college president was at the conference on Saturday, and Dr. Blake was at the Black Caucus Conference as well, so we want to thank them for attending that. Thank you, ladies. One thing that Senator Jackson did not mention is, on the February 9th meeting for the ASMC, they received a presentation regarding becoming a 100% smoke-free campus, and all the board of trustees received one of these. And you've also got one of these. The Center for Disease Control, Vital Signs, it talks about secondhand smoke and unequal danger. Fifty-eight million, 1 in 4 non-smokers in the United States are still exposed to secondhand smoke. We're still experiencing it on our college campuses. At the February 9th meeting, the student government has put together a committee to go 100% smoke-free, and we're going to be working with our college president on that, and members from the California Department of Public Health and the Alameda County Tobacco Control. We want to let the board of trustees know that we'll be coming back, making a presentation regarding our progress, but most importantly, we wanted to know that we really want to look at becoming 100% smoke-free. We're encountering a lot of secondhand smoke, and in your packet, we gave you a pack, a brochure for e-cigarettes, also something that we're encountering on our college campuses. So I have one of these for our college presidents to also just give them the information, but most importantly, secondhand smoke is a danger. We have our children on the Merritt College campus, we have them standing at the bus stop, and they're inhaling secondhand smoke. And when you read the statistics on this, we now want to do something about it on our campuses. So we'll be coming back, making a presentation on our results, and hopefully gaining your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson, did you have something to add to your report?
Oh, yes, sorry, I have one last thing that I forgot. We want to say that the ASMC would like to retain its status as a 501(c). We have been 501(c) for a while, and we desire to keep our status. And also, we have increased our budget, but the petty cash process has not been given a template that we're supposed to go by, so we're wondering why we haven't gotten information on that, and we're requesting that we get someone to look into this and find out why we aren't getting the information that we need so that we can take care of the business that we need to take care of. And we would appreciate our response to that, please.
Through the Chancellor, with respect to the 501(c)(3), that appears to be a matter regarding the, a legal matter regarding the jurisdiction of the Peralta Board of Trustees. Could you have that issue researched for us so that we'll know what our parameters are?
Madam President, we've already talked about it, both the Chancellor, myself, and also with the legal counsel. So we're going to be looking into that, and I recognize that they want this expedited as well as the board. So hopefully, in our next meeting, we'll have a healthy progress report in terms of where we are.
And the second item was the process for drawing down student funds, am I correct in stating it that way?
Yes, from the petty cash, yes.
That'll be included as part of our review, too. Someone who was at Merritt College, they have an intimate understanding of that process, but want to work with the college president and our legal team as well as our finance folks, so we can get this resolved.
All right, thank you.
Clerk, could you remind, let me know when it's 8 o'clock, we do have a public hearing at 8? The next item we have on our agenda is the trustee, Chancellor reports.
Madam President, thank you. Board members, college presidents, members of the Chancellor's staff, members of the campus community, and friends of Peralta, I'm happy to report a couple of items tonight. One, I wanted to follow up on Trustee Oliver's concern that we take a look at some of the international student programs and services for the Laney College students. In talking with Dr. Webb, Dr. Orkin in particular has directed his staff to assign someone to begin to work there. We're going to be looking at hiring an hourly staff in March that will be stationed at the Welcome Center. In the intervening time, we're going to have someone from the International Student Programs Office go over there one day a week and get ready, the facilities in terms of the equipment, the telephone, and the protocols and the procedures. Where also, I think what's really important is to make sure that there's a tracking mechanism so we can document the services provided, whether students directly by that individual or they have to be referred over here at the International Student Programs. So I'm happy to report that it was a collaboration between the campus and the district, and we'll bring back a report to this body in terms of how that's going, as well as a report, I think, on the overall international student program. So I wanted to make sure that all of you, but in particular, Trustee Oliver, that we followed up on his concern, and there'll be other things that we'll want to do as well. So that's one of the things I wanted to share with all of you tonight. The second thing I'd like to share is, this is one of those things where I don't know if we deserve an accolade or not, but we've decommissioned the legacy mainframe, and that's a good thing, okay? I think that has given us more problems than we can even imagine. It was executed on Friday, January 30th, 2015. It was a 45-year-old system. It was costing us money, it was excessive amount of energy consumption, and it was basically at end of life, end of everything. So, we made the transition, the full migration with the IT staff support and all of the business units that support IT to make that a successful transition. And I'm told that, two things. One, Peralta was the only and the last remaining client utilizing this third-party mainframe system. Now, my IT person says "in the world," so I have to believe him. I don't know if I want to even put that out there, but, and then the last thing, this will save us about a half a million dollars a year retiring that system. So, kudos to all that were involved, okay? And the last thing I'd like to report on with respect to, Susan Rennie wanted me to share with all of you that on the 5th of February, there was a joint meeting of the Directors of Business Administration and the Student, Directors of Student Activities. And it was held to discuss the uniform procedures and policies with regard to ASB funds and receipts and expenses. This is something that has been a recurring issue. And there's going to be a meeting next week to come to closure in terms of what those policies and procedures are going to be, so we can talk with students about that and get their input as we move forward. So we'll keep you informed of that progress as well. There'll be other kind of conversations that we'll want to have with each of the campuses as we begin to roll this out to get their feedback before we finalize it, but want to make sure that you know that we were exercising due diligence in trying to make sure to respond to the needs of the students, particularly some of the trustees. And that concludes the Chancellor's report.
Thank you, Deputy Chancellor Gravenberg. The next item we have are the Board of Trustees' reports, and we'll begin with Trustee Bonilla.
Good evening, everyone. I actually just want to take this opportunity to thank both students, Mr. Jackson and Ms. Lee, for their reports. I just feel that you give a very broad and depth report about your student activities, both at Berkeley City College and at Merritt. So I just want to appreciate your continued reporting, and, yes, just thank you.
Trustee Handy.
I'm sure you'll hear more from our colleagues, but last week, four of us attended the annual legislative, National Legislative Summit in Washington. First of all, yes, it was cold. The schedule was very intense, it was very jam-packed, but it was really an incredible opportunity. Sometimes we, on two days, for example, we started at 7:00 a.m. and we finished at 10:00 p.m. And we pretty much, I know my way through the underground from the Senate to the Congress, from Rayburn to all of them from walking underneath so often. It's really great to be greeted and received. They tell us over and over again, they really want to hear from us. They don't want to hear from the lobbyists, they want to hear from us. We also had members of Chabot, Chabot Chancellor accompanying us, and trustees from Chabot College, and we were able to really represent this, the Bay Area, very well in terms of our needs, especially around veteran affairs and having people who have direct experience with that. But one thing I do want to share with you, even though I go kicking and screaming, because who wants to go to Washington in February when it's five degrees and we're not talking wind chill factor? One very, very early morning breakfast we had with the Honorable Congresswoman from Tennessee.
Florida.
Was it Florida? Was it, wait, Tallahassee? Was it Tallahassee, Florida? Sorry, Tallahassee, Florida, Ms. Corrine Brown. And when you wonder, why am I there, why am I so tired? But what she said to us, she looked at us, she says, "Honey, if you're not at the table, then you're on the menu." And that is why we go. If we don't hear our, if our voices aren't heard, if we don't represent the needs of our community, then the funding doesn't happen and the things that we need to happen. So, the next time I think of having to be in Washington in February, I'm going to remember, if I'm not at the table, then I'm definitely going to be on the menu. Thank you.
Trustee Riley?
I was one of those fortunate four that was able to travel to Washington to represent the Peralta Community College District, and I'm really pleased to report that one of our most productive meetings was with the Department of Labor, and we've been working really hard here to work on apprenticeships and internships, and apprenticeships not just with the building trades, but with every career track, everything from auto mechanics to our culinary program. And those are the initiatives that are being put forward by the Department of Labor, and there is a $100 million grant that is being issued by the Department of Labor with the grant deadline being April 30th. There are over 1,000 different categories of apprenticeships, and we have many of those, probably over half of those are at our colleges. Our presidents have done a brilliant job in getting these programs. We have at College of Alameda, the shipbuilding program, we have Allied Health at Merritt, we have Laney College with our construction program, we have technical programs at Berkeley City. And we were so pleased to be welcomed and received by the Department of Labor and to tell them, "We're doing this." And I know that we will be included in the Registered Apprenticeship Consortium for Community Colleges and be eligible to get that money for our students, for training, for books, for stipends for our students so they can be paid as they earn, and that is what our mission is. We were so pleased, it didn't matter, we could have been in Hawaii as warm as we felt by being able to work towards this mission. So we're really thrilled that we had this opportunity, and we were thrilled to be able to complement the work that our college presidents were doing. And it didn't matter if we had to be up at 7:00, and that was 4 o'clock California time, we had bells on. And so I just want to thank my colleagues for going, thank the college presidents for the work they do, the faculty, the staff, our chancellor, the whole team. You know, we felt like we were really getting some, moving the ball forward, and we also were able to advance the issues of veterans' affairs and the ability to benefit, which would cover students that would benefit from being able to go back to college and get their GEDs. So I'm going to let my other colleagues talk about the rest of it, but, you know, it was warm and toasty when we were getting our goals accomplished, so we were pretty happy.
Rest of it. You did it all, young lady. I don't want to repeat all of the things that were already said, but I would say it was one of the best, most productive, organized, well-organized trips that we had, and my congratulations go to Meredith here for the good job she did shepherding us through many of these meetings. And I agree that the visit to the Department of Labor was like a goldmine. It was just a discovery of something wonderful, and I'm... It was just a discovery of something wonderful, and I'm happy to see that we've already moved on it. But it was also the general attitude in Washington, D.C. I will take exception to the Hawaii warmth kind of analogy. That was the coldest damn 28 degrees I've ever experienced. Very bracing, you might say, when you walk out of a warm hotel into the wind. But at any rate, we had very successful visits all the way through and response, the, from the, through the, well, maybe I'll stop for a minute. From all of the speakers, there was a real thrill of recognition that community colleges are now really prime time. And that was partly stimulated by the Obama's proposal for free education. We, even if that may not be possible or attainable within the next few years, it did ignite a real conversation about what community colleges do and what community colleges have done. I do want to echo meeting Corinne Brown from Florida was a special thrill. What an amazing woman. How old is she? She is forever, she's been around forever. But she was extraordinary, and we're very happy to even to touch base with her. You say, "What does Florida have to do with this?" Well, she happened, happens to have just moved on to a major veterans committee, and we were able to talk to her about all of the deficiencies. I believe she's well-informed as it is, but she was very happy and concerned to hear what we had to say about all of the problems associated with our returning veterans. Overall, I give it an A+. It was a wonderful meeting, and I'm especially grateful that the snowstorm didn't occur until two days after we left. So our timing was pretty darn good this year. Anyway, thanks to everybody. It was a very profitable trip, I think, personally and professionally. Thanks. And to what? Oh, that's right, she's a former counselor for Community College, so we had a great deal of sympathy from her. Anyway, that's it. You'll hear more about it as we go along.
Trustee Gonzalez, yeah?
Thank you. I was especially appreciative of the report from Berkeley City College. You know, I wear different hats in the community college world, one of which is as a trustee, but also as an instructor and as a member of my union's executive committee. This past weekend, gosh, was it, I guess it was the weekend before now, I'm losing track of it all, we organized a, an advocacy training. So, you know, one piece of the advocacy work we do is the kind of formal lobbying where we'll send people to DC. That lobbying works a lot better, of course, if you've got a grassroots base. And what is our base in the community college system? In California, it's 2.5 million students, but we're not that well organized sometimes. So our job in the community colleges, a lot of times, is to organize, help organize students to develop their capacity to speak for themselves. So the senator from ASBCC came, she mentioned the Campus Camp Wellstone Training that we did two weekends ago. We had a nice delegation from Berkeley City College. We had a delegation from San Francisco City College, from Foothill, and then a large crowd from Deans, where I am. And it was a fabulous gathering, two days, 60 students, faculty mentors, really looking at, how do you, how do you organize on the ground to fight? How do you organize on the ground to get that power of 2 million, 2.5 million students, 50,000 faculty members, to really exercise political muscle so that when we go and we sit down in the halls of Congress, they know that we're not coming alone, that we come with an army of voters, of activists, of people who will occupy and demonstrate and sit in and vote, and eventually run for office and seat it, you know, have a seat at the powers of table, you know, the tables of power. So that was actually pretty exciting. And then I think, you know, we're not meeting again formally here until March. In between now and then, I want to encourage people to come out to the FAC Conference and the March in March. This year, the Student Senate of California Community Colleges isn't really quite doing a formal big march, but they're organizing a lobby day in Sacramento. And so there's going to be formal lobby training and so forth. The Faculty Association of California Community Colleges is doing a two-day training out there, and we'll be there with a big group of students, and I'm hoping that there'll be delegations from the Peralta colleges as well. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Trustee Oliver.
Hello, everyone. Had a nice President's Day weekend. I'd like to start off my report by thanking my president at Laney College, Dr. Elnora Webb. When I started in student government last year, she was very encouraging. You know, for the, the most important thing she did for me was she empowered me as a student leader. She made, helped me take ownership of my position and helped me believe in myself. So I'd like to thank you for that. You're a true president, and you gave me the courage to get up here and do what I'm doing now. On another note, you know, I almost resigned from this position like three weeks ago, I kind of did, and spoke with a few people and kind of helped me see the light and see that I shouldn't resign, and kind of felt ashamed of myself for resigning when it's, you know, I thought about it's Black History Month, and, you know, if black men years ago would have given up, then there's no telling where I would be or the opportunities that I would have right now. So, you know, it's just, so I'd like to say sorry to students for almost giving up, and I'm trying not to give up. You know, black men in America are often, you know, it's been a history of demeaning black men. This is what I feel like, it may not be a fact, but, you know, it's a history of being marginalized. And I'm not saying it's a race thing here at Peralta or anything, but it's not, it has nothing to do with race, but I know I have felt marginalized due to race, and I get the same feeling here as a student leader. I feel marginalized. I don't feel like the work I do, you know, means too much. So I'd like to thank Dr. Gravenberg for addressing a few concerns that I've brought up, that I'm, you know, that I've brought up in the past. And, yeah, I'm just so, thank you very much for that. I'm trying to stick in there, trying to hang in there and continue out the rest of the year, hopefully, you know, in the next few years, and people that are going to be here for the next few years, you know, you can kind of see, you know, I'm just letting you know how I feel as a student leader, and maybe you guys can make a change so student leaders in the future don't feel like that, especially when they want to take their position very serious. So, yeah, one of the reasons why I wanted to resign is, at the last board meeting, it was brought up that, that the funds were moved without student input, and I brought up Title V. Now, when I read Title V, I take that serious and I take it for what it is, and so when someone says, "We broke Title V, but how can we move forward?" I feel like we can't, because when you're going to break someone's rights, how can we ever move forward? Because you're just going to keep breaking our rights. So, not breaking our right, however you want to put it, but, yeah, so it's just, I don't feel like we can move on, it needs to stop somewhere. So, yeah, it was also brought up that the directors are meeting with, the directors of campus life and student activities are meeting with the Finance Department here and, you know, to come up with procedures. And one of the unfortunate things is, in California Ed Code 76063, it says that student government funds are to be expended with procedures developed by the student government. So now that you've moved our funds, our procedures really don't matter because we have to follow your procedures, the district procedures, so it really doesn't matter what we do, our procedures. Now our rights are getting taken away because we can't develop our procedures, and now you're developing our procedures for us. So that's just another reason, not only will shared governance not follow, but now our rights to develop our procedures for expanding funds are taken away. So, thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Trustee Withrow.
I also attended the ACCT Legislative Summit in Washington, D.C. Don't want to go through a whole lot, but there was a full range in depth of activities throughout the entire week. One area that kind of stood out for me was the Five Hour Policy Academy, Community College Policy Academy, that covered a full range of policy issues that are currently being debated and discussed and cogitated over in, within DC. The speakers were all staff members, and having spent time in Washington, D.C., they're the ones that actually make things happen. They were very candid in their comments. One of the area, two of the areas that stood out for me was that they're now relooking the initiative of student loan default policies. The issue where students may have completed their time in school and are out nine, 10 years in default, that's a current-year kind of issue. And beyond a certain threshold, the current policy calls for not only the federal loans not being available to the college, but that the college be stripped of any Pell Grants. And many of us have severe heartburn over that kind of a policy. It is being relooked at, and to the best of my knowledge, has yet to be executed on. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. The next item that we have on the agenda is the District Academic Senate Report.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening trustees, deputy chancellor, district administration center staff, college presidents, colleagues, and members of the public. Excuse me. It's no exaggeration to say that not a day goes by without some news item, industry report, webinar, or other learning opportunity that focuses on the growing need for and use of educational technology and the relationship of these technologies to student success, student access, and student engagement. Last week, in its February 12 issue, Campus Technology highlighted the importance of, quote, "staying ahead of wireless demand," end quote, by adopting the new wireless standard, 802.11AC. Quoting from the article, "Faced with the ever-growing wireless needs of students and faculty, savvy colleges and universities are future-proofing their networks, shoring up the places where their initial network design does not match up to the rapidly increasing number of devices seeking access by implementing cutting-edge hardware and network revamps." This morning, Inside Higher Ed sponsored a webinar on teaching with technology during which it was observed that the absence of instructional technology puts colleges at a distinct disadvantage in their competition toward a shrinking population of potential students. Not only must the technology be available to students, it must also be available to faculty, who often need considerable support in selecting and adopting appropriate technology resources. Participants in the dialogue refer to creating assignments and assessments that encourage or require students to use these emerging technology tools so that they will be better prepared to be effective communicators in the 21st century workplaces they enter when they leave our schools. Indeed, the ability for a prospective employee to demonstrate how she or he can use technology to present persuasive information that can assist a business in making data-influenced decisions could easily be a quality that helps that person secure employment in a crowded applicant pool. In order to develop skill with these technologies, colleges also need to create teaching and learning labs for both instructors and students, and provide them with instructional support staff to help navigate, excuse me, the ever-changing horizons. The New Media Consortium just released its 2015 Horizon Report for Higher Education on Six Key Trends Accelerating Technology Adoption in Higher Education. At least three of these trends, directly or indirectly, refer to expanding wireless access for instruction. In the past week, I've downloaded but not yet had time to read carefully at least five different new reports from different sources that highlight the need for and uses of educational technology to recruit, retain, and support students in alignment with the national completion agenda that President Obama has been advocating. Future District Academic Senate Reports to the Board will focus on summarizing some of the content of these documents. Over the past six years, educational technology and the urgent pressing need inside Peralta for not only more access to it, but also more facility with it, has been a recurring theme in many District Academic Senate Reports to the Board. Despite that repeated message, we've seen little to no movement that will help address these technology gaps inside the classroom where the need is greatest, primarily as a result of it continually being overlooked in favor of what the district sees as more important uses of limited technology dollars. In fact, on occasion, we actually see impediments to getting the classroom college instructional needs addressed when district-level administrators and even some of you board members have a different idea than those of us who are responsible for instruction about what should be implemented and how. Once again, in these instances, we see evidence that being a service center is distinctly not how the District Administration Center perceives its role as the structural organizing entity of a four-college district. In preparation for the imminent ACCJC team visits, this state of affairs requires swift corrective action. In response to one of the public speaker's comments two board meetings ago, trustee Withrow and others of you expressed concern regarding what faculty are doing to help reduce the high cost of textbooks. Quite naturally, I took that message to the District Academic Senate, and today we prepared an outline of a recommendation that will respond to your concerns. During our meeting, we developed a framework for, A, surveying each discipline in the district to determine what is already being done to reduce textbook costs; B, reviewing what is being done by the Intersegmental Council of Academic Senate's Open Education Resources Council; C, soliciting volunteers to pilot the use of open education resources in their classes; D, establishing a professional development plan with specific outreach to new faculty; and E, proposing a point-two reassigned time for two consecutive semesters for eight faculty members, that's two per college, to do the necessary research that will facilitate implementing strategies for reducing the cost of textbooks, including the use of open education resources. To follow up on this item, we will make the appropriate presentations and requests through the district-level shared governance bodies, specifically the District Education Committee and the Planning and Budgeting Council, and we'll keep you apprised of our progress and the need for your support. That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you for receiving it.
Thank you very much to the Academic Senate for taking that issue up and responding so quickly. That is a huge issue for students, so we very much appreciate your diligence and quick response on that. We have three minutes before the eight o'clock. Oh, no, the public hearing, 8:00 p.m. So the next item that we have on our agenda will take us into the, will take us into the presentations. We first have the Student Success Scorecard Report. It's a 10-minute report, although we have in three minutes our public hearing. So would you mind commencing, and then we will have a recess? Would that be too disruptive for your...
Three minutes?
Begin, we'll have to recess because it's noted on the agenda for eight, and then we'll resume.
That's good. All right. Good evening, presidents, board trustees, members of the administration in public. I'm going to present, my name is Nathan Pellegrin, the Director of Institutional Research for the district, and I'm going to, yes. Oh, oh, you want to stop now?
No, 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 do the three minutes now. I was just thinking, do it all.
Oh, right, right. Yeah. So I'll begin, and then we'll take a break after three minutes. Okay. So the Student Success Scorecard is out for the 2014 year, and, let's see, I don't have any display, oh, it's displayed over there.
Madam President, it would help if the speaker would speak right into the mic.
Okay. So there's five areas of performance indicators on the scorecard. There's the persistence, 30 units, completing 30 units or more, completion of a degree or transfer, remedial progress rate in math, English, and ESL, and CTE completion. Now, we'll walk through the results of the 2014 scorecard for each of these. Importantly, each of the top three, the persistent 30 units and completion are broken out into the subgroups of college prepared and unprepared. Basically, an unprepared student is counted as those who are attempted at math or English at the remedial level. The metrics are based on cohorts, which follow students over six years. So the results from five cohorts are now available, starting in 2003 to 2004, on up through 2007, 2008. So students starting in those years, defined... So students starting in those years define a cohort. So we have five cohorts over those time periods. That makes for a lot of results to look at. So what I'm going to show very quickly, let me know when it's, when it's up.
Actually, this is so important, I think what we should do is just do the public hearing and then start again from the top, after the public hearing that's agendized for eight o'clock. Yeah, this is, this is at our very core of purpose, so we'll do the public hearing and then start back from the beginning.
Sounds good.
Thank you. We're recessing the public meeting for February 17th to begin a public hearing. The, we're now commencing the public hearing at 8:00 AM. The action item is sunshining of contract reopeners for negotiations for the SEIU Local 1021 to the district. Sunshining of contract reopeners for negotiations for the SEIU Local 1021 to the district pursuant to Government Code 3547A, the public shall have an opportunity to comment upon SEIU Local 1021's notice of its contract reopeners with the district. This item received at the January 27, 2015 board meeting introduced SEIU Local 1021's proposal for full contract negotiations for the agreement between the district and the union, effective July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2015. All board recommended contracts are subject to negotiations and execution by the chancellor. The chancellor recommends adoption of the district's initial proposal. Do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we will recess, or we'll close the public hearing on action item 26, sunshining of contract reopeners for negotiations for the SEIU Local 1021 to the district, and resume the public meeting of the Board of Trustees for Peralta Community College District. Our Peralta Community College District meeting is now resumed, and will continue with our Student Success Scorecard presentation.
Okay, so the results from five cohorts I'm going to show in a, in a format that is not typical for bar charts.
If you could move back over to your mic, that would sure help. Thanks very much.
Sure. Typically, the, the bar charts are shown separately across the axis, but since there's so many, I'm going to display them in a way that is a non-standard. I'm going to overlap them so that they have the results shown layered on top of each other, so that the time series is shown like receding into the, the past. So you see on the left-hand side shows an upward trend from results going from prior years over, up to the present to 60% as an example, or a downward trend showing the bars going down to 20% in the present. So the first metric to look at is persistence for the first three primary terms of a student's experience at the community college, and it is for the college-prepared group. You'll see on the bottom a bar, a set of bars, a cluster of bars for each of the colleges and the statewide. So for, for the 2014 scorecard, the statewide figure is 72%. And that figure, you can see, has been stable since the start of the scorecard. Merit is at 79%, Laney is at 60% persistence, Berkeley City at 64, and Alameda at 62. And you'll notice that Merit has a significant increase this year over the prior years. So for the unprepared students, these are students that have at least one remedial math or English enrollment, the figure statewide is 70%. So there's not a big difference between the prepared and unprepared, 72 to 70%. And you'll notice that Merit is at 68%, 61% for Laney, 59% for Berkeley City College, and Alameda at 60%. So then overall combines the groups of prepared and unprepared, 71% statewide, 71% for Merit, 61% for Laney, 60% for Berkeley City College, which is a decrease from the prior years, and 61% for Alameda. So the percentage of students that start in the cohort that earn at least 30 units or more of college credit, again, at statewide, it's at 70%. For Merit, it's at 54%, Laney is at 65%, Berkeley City at 53%, and Alameda at 66%. You'll notice that for Berkeley City and Merit, there's been a decline from prior years, whereas Laney and Alameda have remained more steady. So for the unprepared group, let me clarify, the first group was for college-prepared, and now for the unprepared for college group. The statewide, 65%. So 65% of students statewide, starting in a cohort, managed to earn 30 units or more. At Merit, this figure is 61%, Laney 63%, Berkeley City College 51%, and Alameda 65%. So overall, the combined two groups is a 67% statewide. For Merit, 59%, Laney 63%, Berkeley City College 52%, and Alameda 65%. So completion of degree or transfer, so degrees include awards, AAs or AES degrees, and certificates of 18 units or more, but does not include certificates below 18 units. So statewide, this figure is 70%. At Merit, it's 77%, Laney 73%, Berkeley City College 66%, and Alameda 80%. Now, here's a large difference where the, the distinction between prepared and unprepared for college really shows up. At statewide, the completion rate for the unprepared group is 41% compared to the 70% for the college-prepared. For Merit, this figure is 35%, Laney 39%, Berkeley City College 38%, and Alameda 40%. This appears to be a stable rate. There's not as much fluctuation in prior as you see in the other metrics. So for the overall combined rate, it's 48% statewide. Merit 46%, Laney 49%, Berkeley City College 47%, and Alameda 52%. Now, the remedial progress rate, now, these are students for math. These are students starting in a below-college-level math course and progressing through to a college-level math course. Statewide, that is 31% of students progress through, this is a subset, to be clear, this is a subset of the cohort, those that actually had to start in math at the remedial level, and it's tracking the proportion of them that make it through to the college level. So it's not exactly the same denominator. Statewide, it's 31%. For Merit, it's 27%, Laney 30%, Berkeley City College 32%, and Alameda 34%. The remedial progress rate in English, statewide, it's 44%. At Merit College, 32%, Laney 25%, Berkeley City College 32%, and College of Alameda Remedial progress rate in English as a second language, statewide is 27%. Merit 5%, Laney 19%, Berkeley City College 25%, College of Alameda 21%. So finally, completion with CTE courses taken. This is a completion of an award, an A or certificate, having taken, in addition to that, a CTE course. Statewide, it's 54%. At Merit College, it's 48%. Laney 51%, Berkeley City College 44%, and Alameda 60%. So that concludes the presentation of the statistics of the scorecard. There's more information that can be found by following these links on the chancellor's, State Chancellor's Office website, as well as locally on the institutional research site for the Peralta District. And you can find additional disaggregated data that's not in the scorecard, so far as success, persistence, and transfer data at these. These are further links at the IR site in the district. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, trustee Withrow.
As a carryover from the ACCAT conference, there's a movement underway and has been ongoing, supposedly out of the White House, that is calling for a rating system. And during the course of discussion of that in the, at least two of the groups, the California scorecard system was submitted as an alternative to what the Department of Education is currently talking about. It was looked at very favorably. My question is, in going through these, I mean, I see positives, and I see some things that are kind of disturbing. When we look at a, a scorecard like this, what kind of a cause-and-effect relationship do we investigate? In other words, why are we below the state level, for example, pretty well across the board, or why is any one particular college high in one category and low in another category so that administratively and within the faculty and shared governance, we can take actions to improve? You know, the bottom line of the scorecard thing is to do just that, to give us a picture of how we're performing. But, you know, if we just leave it at that, to me, it doesn't mean that the drill is worth doing.
Yes, I, these metrics are a starting point. It's really what it is. And there is, I do not know of a way, and I have not heard of a way, to go directly from these metrics to a cause-and-effect analysis. This is, it's a, it's a, it's an initial point to direct our attention towards more in-depth analysis about what the cause-and-effect relationships are, working together with the presidents, the faculty, and the students to identify what the mechanisms are that contribute to this. There's a lot of good research to start with that can shed light on that, but being a dynamic system, the causes are many, and it's, it's not always clear what the, the major causes are. I know from personal experience that some of the features that show up in the data are not the kinds of features that we are interested in, such as data quality. It's important to know when there's data quality issues because that affects the results. But there are many such, that's one example of the things that show up. Another factor to take into account is that it's often difficult to gauge when a difference is a meaningful difference. Some of these metrics are very tightly, you might say, very common across the state, and most colleges share, are, fall within the same range. And so when a difference occurs between colleges, it's hard to tell whether that's due to a meaningful difference or there's demographic fluctuations. Personally, what I've found in, in, just to follow up on that latter point, what I've found in research doing here for the equity, student equity report, and for the, the environmental scan, is the demographic changes drive a lot of these, and it, it tracks very well to look at the demographic changes, socioeconomic changes that are contributing to the incoming cohorts of students.
That's all I was hearing.
Thank you. It's Mr. Pellegrin?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the, the research and the report. I'm trying to understand some of the data, and then I've got a couple of questions here. So we're tracking five cohorts here, and so the last cohort was 2007, '08. Am I to understand that the data here that you've got that says 2014, what we're looking at is the data from the cohort from 2007, '08?
Correct.
Five years later here, so that is five years, more or less, and where they are right now?
The cumulative results of following that cohort.
Okay. So if, so you're looking at people who started five years ago, and you're saying, okay, well, where are they right now? Roughly, how many of those people are actually in the system right now?
Left in the system, not very many, although, yeah.
Well, so pardon my confusion here, but it strikes me that that data, although kind of useful from an historical perspective, isn't especially useful from a current practice perspective. That is, if you say, what, what could we manipulate that might in fact have some outcome? You wouldn't know the outcome for three years.
Right.
Okay, so I beg my, you know, forgive my ignorance, but it seems to me this is a, an enormously flawed tool from the perspective of a, of an administrator or a faculty member or a student services person actually trying to figure out, what could we do differently? And then how would we know? Because then we'd have to wait three years to find out from this data whether it made a difference. Is that, is that correct?
Or even five or six?
Five or six, okay.
Yeah, that's, I.
So from your perspective as an institutional researcher, I mean, you have to do this. It's part of our requi, I presume this is part of our institutional requirements, et cetera, and, and so there's some value in it, I think. But from your perspective as an institutional researcher, trying to understand, what is that we can actually do? How do we change our practices in some meaningful way and then track them? From an institutional research perspective, what else are we doing that's more meaningful and more generative for our actual practices?
Well, I think that the point about following up, it being the time lag effect, is very commonly raised, and it is a concern. Typically, in our planning cycles, we're looking at a results one year, one term to one year later, and we're making decisions based on that. It's not common to look at, to follow cohorts over time. But research bears out that if you really want to be able to identify those trends that are sensitive to changes in the institution or to demographic changes, you have to follow cohorts over time. So there's a trade-off. Both perspectives are necessary. The chancellor's office shows this set, and this methodology for the reasons that it had, it lays out in the, the Student Success, in the act.
So I, I guess what I'm asking is actually a different question, not, all right, so like, we're going to do this, and it gives, and, and this data provides a certain piece of value. I'm not disputing that. From a day-to-day practice, though, it doesn't provide that much value. From a long-term perspective, it provides value. But from the day-to-day perspective, what are, what are we doing in the district in terms of looking at what, what we're doing now, and how do we measure it?
Actually, I'd like to add on to that question, because I know that we had a program, particularly at Merit, that was showing a larger persistence in completing education that was part of one of the programs that was intended to increase student retention, and it was a cohort group, it was a learning community. And I was wondering if that had any bearing on the statistics that showed a higher percentage of completion at Merit over a certain cohort period, because we're investing money in student equity funds, and we're supporting these programs, and those programs have also been recognized by the Department of Education. So Nikki's saying, what is it, how does it bear out day-to-day, and you're showing us how, how the, the student success bears out over time, and I'm wondering what factors could possibly be leading to the numbers where one campus might show a greater success in terms of student retention and completion?
So I think that's exactly the kind of follow-up question that can be asked, in presenting this kind of data and seeing such as a difference that is observed. presenting this kind of data and seeing such as a difference that is observed in, for a particular year, between Merit and the other colleges. And I have heard, I think it's, we're talking about the same one, I've heard of the program that was at Merit. The MAP program, thank you. That was noted as being very successful. And that may be, that may be one of the, the explanations for this. And it, we rely on the, the knowledge of the administrators that have worked in the district to interpret the data in that light so that it can provide, together with that, provides evidence. So it, on a more operational level that we have in place, we do have mechanisms for following up and tracking persistence of students from any given point through time to see, we can generate these figures, persistence, and completion rates, following students from term to term. We've done this, we did this last spring, and looking at the, not even last spring, this last summer, looking for the, at the student equity plans, prepared data, following students for the, the last few years in persistence and, but so far as analyzing individual programs, we are relying on what the knowledge is of the programs from the, the people that work with the students, to bring that together with the data, with the results, to show what the, to provide the interpretation of the evidence.
I'm going to ask if we have any other questions, and then, I think we have one more observation.
Technically, this is a pretty crude tool for modulating exactly what's happening today. I think we would all agree on this. The primary purpose of this is to prove what the entire state is doing. We're all involved in this, but the real thrust is to either prove or disprove that we're doing well from a statewide perspective, especially with regard to support for the community colleges. So this, from the state perspective, this information is very useful to show that there is or is not adequate progress being made. But from an institutional perspective, we have to depend on the actual data that we are collecting day by day, month by month, and year by year, if, and use that data to make calculations about what we're doing well and not. That is, we'd be closer to the data, and the data then is hot rather than cold, and you could make, you can make applications that would modify existing programs, and we could make comparisons, why is it that Merit got that many more graduates or that many more levels of persistence, et cetera. So it seems to me that the, that we need, in order to make it really work, is we need the existing contemporary now, here and now, data with this as a background look of where we've been. So I would not try to impose on this relatively crude instrument here as a, as a failure, per se, which it is not, it really is. It's a long-range picture for a great big global picture. And I might add that when we were in the conference, California has, this is part of it here, has the most sophisticated scorecard in the entire nation, and is being held up as an example of how you can prove to the feds that community colleges are doing a very worthwhile job. Anyway, amen.
So we'll, we'll take one more observation from trustee Gonzalez, and then we have to move on, because we have also our career technical- We have our tech, career technical education and workforce development presentation, as well as our Mejere Bond Funds drawdown. So let's make this brief, and then let's move on to our other two presentations.
This will be so brief. So I don't, I don't dispute that there has, there's some value here, but it strikes me that the power of data is our ability to use it. What we can see from this data is that there's not a lot of change statewide, and it strikes me that the real power is when we can crowdsource the energy, the initiative of people within the district on the ground, students, faculty, student services people. We need to redesign our institutional research mechanisms to actually empower people with real-time data, so that they can actually look and say, oh, if I do this, this semester, I get this result. Oh, okay, it moved, two percent, that's a big deal. Can I do this? And if we can figure out research design structures that actually do reach to the individual person who could do something, I think we could change quite a bit. And I just think we need to completely rejigger how we do institutional research. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pellegrin, and our next presentation is on our career technical education and workforce development.
Good evening, board members, deputy chancellor, college presidents, chancellor's staff, administrators, faculty, students, and members of the public. My name is Karen Engel, and I have been delighted to serve in the district's role of Director of Economic and Workforce Development for a little over a year. The district saw fit to recreate this function a little over a year ago, and its sole objective is to support the success of workforce development at the Peralta Colleges. And by that, we mean our CTE, Career Technical Education Programs, faculty, and students. Having some technical difficulties, excuse me. I'm trying to go to the next slide.
Oh, you do have a technical difficulty.
Magical, thank you. So, within educational services, we are pursuing that objective through six strategies, and I'm going to speak very briefly through each of them. The first is to develop resources. You have in your packet and in this slide, a representation of the resources we've been able to garner for the district and its colleges over the last year. It's presented there in two columns. One is for the larger region in which we're a part. The right-hand column is for the Peralta Colleges and the district specifically, and that totals nearly $6 million over the last twelve, twelve to thirteen months. The largest contributors to that, and I'll speak to them in a little detail, greater, greater detail in a moment, the Career Pathways Trust Grant, our AB-86 Adult Education Planning Grant, our PROP-39 Workforce Development Funds, for which Laney serves as the fiscal lead for a 12-college consortium, our CELE, or Community College Linked Learning Initiative that we have with Oakland Unified, our CTE Enhancement Funds, and two small grants we just got from the Bay Area Workforce Funding Collaborative for Laney and Merit. And then we have our regular allocations from, from the state through the Transitions and Perkins Funds. So that gives you a sense of the scale and scope of, of the funds we've been able to help organize. I included this slide because I wanted to emphasize the point, and it was mentioned by many of the trustees, that much of the direction and priority given by both the federal government and the state government for career technical education and workforce development at the colleges is being given to how we perform as a region, that the colleges are in fact part of a larger economic region, the Bay Area, and its subregions, the East Bay in particular. And I, I emphasize this because the Career Pathways Trust, the Adult Education, the CTE Enhancement, all of these funding streams that are now open to us, and there are many, are tied to our ability to organize and collaborate regionally, both with our college partners, our industry partners, our K-12 partners, and we'll get into that in a minute. Engaging those partners is a critical strategy. As you know, many of our CTE programs are already well-aligned with our regional employers, but that is also a critical element of many of our funding streams, both existing and future. How we leverage our community-based organizations, both in terms of supporting our students and helping to get them connected with careers, our secondary school districts, our adult schools, our workforce boards with which we are increasing our partnerships. And again, around the region, groups like the Bay Area Community College Consortium and SB 1070 are just a few of the regional initiatives of which we are part and, on which I serve as our district representative. Part of our function is not only on procuring and securing these grants, but also in their implementation. So making sure that the colleges have what they need, and that we're working on systems supports to make sure that we're implementing successfully. So to that end, we're working on the Career Pathway Program Development. You know, we're pursuing four industry sector pathway programs in, with the CPT Grant, working with faculty to lead collaboration with our adult education partners, looking at how we can serve many, many underserved adults in our region, looking at how we improve assessment and placement of students, particularly those coming from high school and who are being put into remediation when perhaps that's not necessary, and looking at how we connect our CTE faculty with certain things like model curriculum and other partnership opportunities so that they can grow their programs. In this slide, it's, it's an effort to depict the interconnectedness between so much of what you see on your plates right now, from our equity plans, the Triple SP, Adult Education, Career Pathways, et cetera. The upper tier there are really the story around how we create more seamless transitions, both for students coming in and progressing in our colleges, how we improve their placement and make that more accurate so that they can move on and persist and complete more quickly. CTE as a vehicle for learning and employment, we're working not only within our adult ed, but obviously our Career Pathway Programs, our Bridge Programs, to make sure that adults and young people are tapping into how successful they can be in school and in work through CTE. And then finally, making career connections. All of the colleges are refocused on their efforts to secure gainful employment for their students as an outcome, and we're increasingly looking at how we track that. And so the Career Pathways Trust Grant and activities as we implement them, including engaging high school students in early college experiences, are all part of that bigger picture. Another strategy is to improve and develop internal systems. For example, within Career Pathways, one of the noted established techniques for making sure students persist is to get them early college credit. So a high school student in a pathway could earn college credit by being duly enrolled. This is concurrent enrollment by another name, but it's something that we're setting up so that these students can enjoy the opportunity at their high school during the high school day. We know that getting the early college credit while they're still in high school proves to them that they can do college-level work, and it will enhance their, the chances of their success in transitioning to college. As I mentioned, we're improving our links to the workforce boards, their one-stop career centers, we're working with IR and other partners to look at how we make more accurate our data reporting systems on a number of aspects. So those are some of the internal systems we've been working on improving. Promoting CTE programs, both to employers, students, and the general public, making sure people are aware, working with our Public Information Officer to create district-wide consistent messaging, both online and in print, about our programs and what's available, and helping to coordinate that across the four colleges. This is a little blueprint that one of our digital media students at Laney helped design, which is now on our CTE webpage, that reminds people that they can plan for their career in the 15 key industry sectors that have been identified by the State Chancellor's Office as being the, the prime growing and most important industries in our state. And lastly, communicating and fostering internal relationships to support CTE. Both externally and internally, some of our career technical education programs are not as well-understood as they could be, and so, under the vice chancellor and chancellor's direction, we've organized a district-wide CTE committee that's comprised of faculty, students, and administrators across the four colleges. It serves as a subcommittee to the District Education Committee and reports out there regularly, including their suggestions around internal systems that could be improved, or regional marketing, or other efforts that they'd like to prioritize. I also speak on their behalf with the Academic Senate, the Chancellor's Cabinet, the vice presidents and deans, and my colleagues in Educational Services, to make sure that the CTE issues are well-understood. And that's my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Madam President.
Trustee Withrow.
Thank you very much for the, for the rundown. I've heard a number of presentations on workforce development, and quite frankly, most of them came across like they were speaking Russian. They use acronyms to an extent that would have baffled even the Pentagon. All of this that's going on, and including all of the variables and the various participants and whatever, is it working?
I believe so.
Are we getting a, are we achieving what we're hoping to achieve?
If what we're trying to achieve is more robust programs and a greater awareness and participation and success in those programs, I would say yes.
How about the bottom-line numbers of, are we building the kind of workforce that is consistent with existing techno, existing business ventures, and the kind of business ventures that we'd like to pull into the area to energize the economy?
So what, one of the very exciting innovations that's been led by the state is the creation of regional marketplaces that are industry-driven. And so, part of my job has been to make sure our faculty are linking in with those conversations and hearing more regularly from industry where things are going, and that we're realigned and update our programs accordingly. So that's certainly part of our effort.
We have a question from trustee Bonilla, and I also had a question along the lines of trustee Withrow. The benchmarks of success are what we really, the, the actual hands-on anecdotal manifestation of impact is what we're struggling to, to see. And I know that we have, different trustees have spoken with BART, with East Bay Regional Park District, with different regional employers that have said that they're, have a large percentage of their workforce that are retiring, and they're asking us, when are we going to get involved? But then we see the diagrams, and we see the programs, and I'm wondering, how are we hearing this from the actual employers when there's this program going on, and how do we bridge that gap in a very fundamental and pragmatic way?
So, this is work that's ongoing. As I mentioned, traditionally, the way that we've partnered with employers like that is by program. The CTE faculty have taken it on themselves, and you heard from Louis Quinlan the other day about the work that he's done with East Bay Mud, for example, and we have a tremendous internship, you know, program going with them now. In order to scale and to work with more companies and more employers, we're going to have to do more than rely just on the bandwidth of our faculty to make these partnerships happen. And so that's what we're trying to build now, is by college, a system of real workforce development competency and outreach, so that we can handle more of those relationships and create better and more deep connections for our students. So that's work that's ongoing.
We have trustee Bonilla and trustee Galasa.
Hi, thank you for that report. Kind of along the lines of trustee Brown, I wanted to hear a little bit more about the phases, because I do understand that much of what happened or has occurred over the past year and a half has really been kind of the initial planning phase, and implementation really quite hasn't set in yet, so we're not really seeing some, some of the results that we're anticipating. So I'd definitely like you to talk a little bit about that. And also, if you could please tie in the role of the sector navigators, and how, and what that looks like for us, because there's been quite a bit of discussion for us about what the role of the sector navigators are in this, in this entire process. Thank you.
Thank you. I should have included them, but trying not to make it too much alphabet soup, but I'll, I'm happy that you brought up these issues. In terms of phasing, it's true, and one reason this work is just gaining momentum is that both in Career Pathways, which- is that both in Career Pathways, which started in July, and AB 86. AB 86 has been in a planning year, as you know. We have heard that there will be money, we hope, in the state budget, starting July 1, to implement on that plan. And we have great hopes, and I think one of our faculty leaders of that effort is here tonight, to start building systems with our adult schools that really will make those pathways more robust. But that's work that will, you know, just start commencing next year. In terms of the pathway work, that's a four-year grant, and we're halfway through the first year. And we've, you know, been happily building our capacity, hiring a director, and getting going. But it will take us some time to really deliver those results. So that's what I can say about phasing on those two major efforts. In terms of the deputy, the sector navigators and the deputy sector navigators, many of you, I'm sure, are familiar with the State Chancellor's Office Initiative, Doing What Matters. And there were certain elements they put in place. One was these marketplaces that I mentioned. Those are staffed by sector, so industry sector navigators and deputy sector navigators in each of the 15 major industry sectors that we're focused on. And so, our East Bay region benefits from connections with those folks. And they in turn are faculty who are designated to really go out and engage industry regionally. So for example, right now, we're working, Laney faculty is working on leading a Bay Area-wide application to build out our programs for mobile app development. And the deputy sector navigator in our region is bringing in the employer partners into that discussion. So it's been a very nice partnership, and we work in partner. And I think you know, we host two of the deputy sector navigators, one at Laney and one at College Valamida. I also want to just take a quick liberty to, I forgot to mention, on the U.S. Apprenticeship Grant Proposal, we are tracking that closely, both in ICT and in machining, and we'll be moving ahead on that.
Yes, my question is very similar to Trustee Withrow and Trustee Brown. It's the difficulty from the perspective of a trustee to really see how productive these various programs are. So on, for example, in your presentation, connect CTE faculty with model curriculum partnership opportunities, et cetera. It'd be nice if we saw some outcomes. My, when I, when I read these, and I speak a little Russian, yet, that's about it. But I, I never really hear follow-ups that give us some of the grainy detail of 47 students, 15 of our faculty received whole new curriculum packages as a consequence of this. And 37 of our students are set off on pathways with program A, I mean, with business A, B, C, et cetera. I think the human element would be very welcome in here, and especially the connection with student success. So anyway.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions? Would we be getting a follow-up with the human element integrated into the follow-up?
I'd be delighted to. Thank you.
There's a question from the dais as to when that might be feasible.
Yeah, feasible time for that to come back to us.
Let me consult with Dr. Orkin and Dr. Engel. Probably won't be until either the latter part of the March meeting or maybe the April meeting. There's some things congealing right now, and I think we'll have better data for you at that time.
And with the April deadline for the Department of Labor grant, would that be part of a, would we be able to know how we're doing in terms of, or how many programs might be possible to be included in the Regional Apprenticeship Consortium?
Dr. Engel, do you want to handle that one?
Certainly, we'll know by April which proposals we will be participating in. You mentioned yourself, the deadline is April 30th. So I'll be able to give you an indication of what we're putting in for. We won't know any results, obviously, until quite a bit after that.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Next item on our agenda, thank you very much for that report. Thank you, Dr. Engel. The next item is the Measure A Bond Funds Drawdown Presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, College President, Vice Chancellors, stakeholders, and the public at large. At the last board meeting, the request of the Chancellor and the Board of Trustees, I made Measure E drawdown for the bond funding. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about the capital projects and Measure A bond drawn down. Some of you may be aware, the bond was passed by the citizen of Alameda, not Alameda County, back in 2006, and for the total sum of $390 million. Last time, we talked about some definitions, like occurrences and expenditures, as to what they mean, so that if we run through the report, it will act as a frame of reference. Now, at the meeting of June 23, 2009, the Governing Board of Trustees allocated and appropriated the entire $390 million to be used for various capital projects procurement, FF and E, and technology. So this chart here gives you a breakdown of how much each college was allocated. As you can see, you have Berkeley City College with $25 million, College of Alameda, 73.7, Laney, 142, Mary College, 91, District Administrative Center here, 13 million. District-wide, 58 million. When we say district-wide, this is all the colleges, including the District Administrative Center. I also want to qualify that the $142 million for Laney College is actually 140 million, or 141 million, because 2 million was added to Laney College for the district-wide clinic infrastructure to be located in that site, which was about 2 million. And also, the reason why Berkeley City College had 25 million at that time was because they had a brand-new facility that has just been completed. So most of the facility needs for business was already addressed at that time. Now, on this other chart here, we have the total amount of 390 million that was voted by the taxpayers. Out of this amount, 275 million has been sold. And that is what we'll be using for capital infrastructures and IT procurement and FF and E at each of the colleges. 115 million has not been sold. Then expenditures to date for each of the following, for the colleges is the next chart, showing that Berkeley City College have spent 13 million, College of Alameda, 28 million, Laney, 82, Mary College, 63. Then you have District Administrative Center, 10 million, and then the district-wide with 53 million. Now, there was a question that was asked by me by the Vice Chancellor for Finance as to what our expenditures would be between now and June 30. And the spend down that we anticipate to spend between now and June 30 is about 33 million. And the breakdown is on the right-hand side of the screen, where we're going to be spending about several million dollars for Berkeley City College. This would be the acquisition of new facilities when the board approves that. There's 1 million expenditure that is going to be going to College of Alameda. And this will include part of the Veterans Center that we're looking at instituting as soon as possible. Then Laney College has some projects that are either ongoing or we spend a million. Then the Barbara Lee Science and Allied Center at Mary College would be completed by June 30. And then the expenditures to pay the Clark and Sullivan Company will amount to about 21 million. So those are the numbers of what is spent down entails. So overall, essentially, after June 30, it is expected that out of the cash outlet that is in the bank, that we're going to spend most of it down to the tune of about 9 million that is going to be left for other expenditures, for ongoing small projects. So what this means is that we're going to be sending recommendation to the Chancellor, invariably the Governing Board of Trustees, to make an urgent arrangement to sell the remaining 115 million. And what we're going to be doing with that funding is to be able to institute the Laney College Student Center. We need to work on the swing space because, as you know, this is an open college and space is very tight and difficult to be able to attain and acquire. And we're going to be using portable buildings to be able to achieve most of that. And also, to be able to eventually tear down the existing student center the way we know it and begin a new contract. But before those contracts are encumbered, we need to be able to have the funding in the treasury, Alameda County treasury, where we keep monies, to be able to fund such a project. Then we also have a design bid project coming up for College of Alameda for Building C. Now, the details is for the bonds sold and the times and date when each of the amount were sold is indicated on the bond sale. This is the numbers that, for Berkeley City College square footage area and all the other colleges. As I indicated in my last report, we have about 1.5 million square footage area throughout all the four colleges. Out of about, out of that numbers, 1 million is the assignable square footage, which is actually the area that is used for offices, classroom, libraries, and the rest of it. Now, this is the expenditures that has been made by Berkeley City College. As you can see, there's hardly anything that is left at the end of the fiscal year if that property is acquired, other than the amount that is needed to be able to do tenant improvement for the property we're trying to acquire. Those are the graph that represent the amount of budget and expenses to date and commitment. As you can see, we have 2.2 million commitment here for the property we're trying to acquire. At College of Alameda, 73 million was allocated. Most of the projects for College of Alameda have been completed, with the exception of the Building C project. You had Ventura Center, and then the FF and E funding that is available to the college. Laney College, as I indicated, had 141 million with 2 million of that amount, 143 million altogether, being part of the board-approved clinic, health clinic for all the colleges that is located at Merritt, sorry, at College of, as Laney College. So that is the amount that has been expended to date, with the exception of building the student center that we're talking about that is going to be a sort of design bid build project. Okay, Mary College had a total of 91 million, and most of the projects for Laney College, for Mary College has been completed. The remaining one is the Barbara Lee Allied Center, Health Center that is being worked on. But I also want to say is that there are smaller projects that are going on in the district, other than the big one. There's a total of about 76 small projects that are going on throughout the district that staff are working on. They could range anywhere from doing Prop 39 sustainability project. For instance, over the weekend, we just converted the electrical pumping stations to be able to get Laney, to be able to get Laney College campus prepared for car chargers, for electricity, for those that are procuring vehicles that could be able to benefit from that. So we had to shut down electricity over the weekend to get that prepared. So there are a lot of small or mid-sized projects that are going on throughout the district, in addition to these other bigger ones. So invariably, you have the total amount that every college has expended to date and what is left of those funding, especially the IT and FF and E, is what is mostly left in some of these, some of the colleges. And what they are using this for, for like computer refresh and equipment, or ergonomic furnitures that are needed for the classrooms and the offices. So these are the numbers of the amount and commitment that has been made and the balances that are available for all the colleges. Then the District Administrative Center. Most of the projects here in the district are complete. We just recently procured some modular buildings so that we don't continue to rent the ones that we already have. There is an IT project that is going to be going on in the department to be able to provide room for the department to have meetings and training on its premises that they don't currently have. So that, and then we also want to work on the HVAC over at the IT department to prevent the unit and the system, the white room, from equipment failure if you had higher temperatures. So those are some of the District Administrative Center projects that are remaining. Now, this project, as I said in my last presentation, most of the supervision and work was done in-house. And in research, we find out that by doing this work in-house, it has helped to leverage the bond monies that we had, and we brought expert in-house to get the work done, and that saved us quite a bit of costs. Our initial estimation was that if we had contracted out all the job to outside contractors, we would have paid almost 48 to 50 million dollars. And when we did the work in-house for about five-year period, it cost about 2.5 million in-house to do the same amount of work. Then we also hired, as you can see from the numbers here, we also hired the BLC architect and did the facility master planning. And then, we also, at one time, made effort to acquire the Kaiser Center that we made a decision that it was not going to be a feasible project. So, but the expense that we did for due diligence are the numbers that you are seeing on this page. So this is a breakdown of how much has been expended for overhead, how much of these monies is being used by other contractors. For instance, you will see something that says Certified Payroll Compliance, $908,000. That is monies we're paying to companies like Pedia, who is directly doing certified payroll for every project that we have district-wide. It's not a district expense that is done in the District Administrative Center, but rather, they are doing the work in every college to be able to give services, to see that individuals are paid the Department of Industrial Relations prevailing wage in California. So those, those are the rest of the report. And again, the editors, over and over, have reviewed Measure A transactions, and we are in compliance. And I'm ready for any questions that you may have.
Do we have any, thank you very much for that report, Dr. Carl. Do we have any questions? Trustee Gonzalez here.
Madam President.
Oh, I think Nikki and then Bill.
Just real quickly, I note it looks like on each campus, there's sort of one major project. At Laney, there are two, looks like a library and then the renovation of the Student Center. And my question was... And my question was, are the funds that are committed there, that 33 million, is that enough to build the library? It seemed like that, that all the estimates that I saw before weren't enough, and I'm just kind of wondering if it's not enough, what's the plan?
Yeah, what is, actually Laney had three major projects. One was the athletic feed house complex that has been done. The other one is the student center that is being planned. And also, some funding was allocated for the library learning resource building. But that is the same building that we have away as a district, has also been waiting for the State Chancellor's Office for fund allocation, because the midpoint of construction estimate for the project is going to be about 70 million. In other words, the amount of money currently sent aside will in no way be sufficient to do that project.
Okay, so we're waiting for state bond money?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Trustee Withrow.
Given what you've got here, and I do appreciate the rundown, and it is complex, and I appreciate the fact that you hit on the, not on all 34 pages, but the salient points. These are the funds and to be done. How much do we need, over and above what's the 390 million, is needed to complete the projects that each of the colleges need, desire, want?
That is, currently, with the project that we're doing on hand right now at BCC, there's about 12.5 million altogether that is, that is needed to be able to do the acquisition and tenant improvement for the building we're trying to acquire, but that funding is available to be able to do that. Then for Laney College, a decision will have to be made about the student center, and with the college president and the chancellor are working with the constituency to determine what type of transfers would be needed to be able to accomplish one of the buildings, either the library learning resource center or the student center, because the state is not looking at going out for a facility bond anytime soon, given the governor's facility discussions that has been going on. So at Laney College, that is where we really have the cross of the issue. Laney is going to need at least about 70 million dollars to build a library learning resource center. That is how much Laney needs for that program. But in terms of the educational master plan that was presented here a couple of years ago, there are so many other needs in all the colleges, but especially Laney. For instance, they need a new theater. The theater we have right now, and all the issues that are tender to that building, look much to be desired, so we need to do something about that. There is this stem building that has to do with science, math, and technology, that is a new building that they're trying to build, that estimation for that building would be up to like 40 million. So in the, in the future, when the chancellor recommends to the board about way forward, I think we'll be able to have a more substantive discussions, like in a workshop, as to where we need to go from here. But right now, the remaining amount of money, 115 million, is already allocated, is appropriated. We just need to sell it so that we can complete the ongoing project and then prepare for the future.
I have a question, actually, of those 76 projects that are smaller that are ongoing, how many of those are to address maintenance issues or deferred or?
Yeah, they, they will all help to, they will all help with maintenance issues, the 76 projects that we have. But all together, for this coming school year, they, we're going to go into the Planning Budget Committee to talk about deferred maintenance. As I presented to the cabinet today in our meeting, we're looking for about 5.3 million to be able to do deferred project for the 2015-16 school year. But the State Chancellor's Office did not make available scheduled maintenance funds as they usually do every year. But we are also informed that by May revise, some of the funding may be allocated to facilities. But if we don't, the budget line item that we have for scheduled maintenance needs to be funded, so that we can continue to take care of the leaks, take care of every other type of challenge that we inhibit us from having classrooms that are conducive for teaching and learning.
Sounds like that's still something to be determined.
Yes.
If not after the May revise, then we'll have to undertake how to address that funding shortfall.
That is correct.
Other questions?
Madam President, just one, extra one if I could, please. The Laney Library, I think most would agree, should have been replaced 10 years ago, and we were waiting for the state to come through, because they identified as a priority when they went out for facility bonds to replace libraries. What is the league, what is the State Chancellor's Office, and what is the Board of Governors, what are they doing in terms of campaigning for, if you will, the state to go out and procure facility bonds?
There is an upcoming meeting by all the community colleges in Northern California that will be held here in Peralta, maybe at Merritt College or at Laney College. I've not informed the college presidents yet. But the idea is that the California Community College Facility Coalition wants to bring to the table for us to look at way forward on how facilities can be funded statewide. Because right now, what the governor is looking at is that facility issue should be a local affair of every community. But there are some communities in the state that cannot be able to afford to be able to raise such an amount of bond funding. So we're going to look at issues relating to where we go forward from here in terms of obtaining resources. We're going to look at how we can campaign to be able to get new bond funding from our various communities. So there is a panel discussion that is going to be happening along those lines. But at the same time, the K-12 are also having their own discussions and dialogue on how they can go forward to be able to get funding, to get this done. But overall, what is being recommended is about $9 billion statewide, to be able to take care of higher ed and K-12, because facilities lack in terms of modernization and in terms of adequacy of scheduled maintenance or deferred maintenance.
Thank you very much for that report, Dr. Caro.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar with the modifications. Oh, we, and we have a speaker card on 14, which is on the action calendar, so we could still move forward with the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that a unanimous vote? I'll note that we have an item that requires a two-thirds vote, which is a facilities matter, number 27. So let the record show that we had a unanimous vote on the consent calendar. The next item on the agenda is our action calendar, and we have items 14 and 16 that have been pulled for discussion. We'll start with item 14.
Madam President, there's a public speaker, Lisa Cook, on item 14. This is the Laney Wireless Upgrade.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be before the board tonight. I am Lisa Cook, the Laney College Faculty Senate President, and I am here to ensure that the board knows that the wireless upgrade project is good news for Laney College. As you know, or you may, may or may not know, currently, some classrooms have wireless, some don't, and in any case, it's spotty. And faculty have voiced concern for the need for an upgrade. And over, this has been in our technology, our plan since 2009, and we're ready. So we're pleased to announce that we have a sound project that has been vetted at the college, and I wanted to make sure that the board was aware that of the faculty support for this wireless upgrade project. When it appeared on the agenda without a recommend, it did not indicate that the chancellor was recommending approval, I was concerned. And I contacted the chancellor, had a nice little email chat with him over the weekend in which he indicated that this project does have his full support. It was an oversight, an error on the agenda, that's what he shared with me. I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that, and I believe Dr. Gravenberg could speak to that if necessary. So I was pleased to know that we have his support for this project, and I hope you'll share our sense that this is really good news and support the project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments on item 14?
Madam President, I pulled this item in part just because I was trying to understand what it was, and so if I can clarify my understanding, just to get clear on this. And I want to just start by saying, I have no objections to the substance of the proposal. I fully support the development of a stronger wireless network at Laney. So that's not the issue at all. It's just, when I looked at it, it said, board action requested was the approval of this project. So what I understand is, we're being asked to approve a particular vendor, CBX, Arrow Hive? Is that, we are being asked to approve a particular vendor for this project. It's not just to approve the project. My understanding also is that this is funds, these are funds that have already been allocated out of Measure A, so this is no additional funds out of Measure A, it's already been allocated to Laney College. That wasn't quite clear to me from the item itself. And that then, these three vendors went through a competitive bidding process, this was the vendor that was selected, and that's what we're being asked for. So if I can just get that clarification, I'm ready to move forward. It's just that the way the item was presented to the board, that wasn't quite clear.
Actually, it would be a piggyback contract, and it would be competitive selection, as I understand it, but Vice Chancellor Caro, could you clarify?
Yeah, I'd say I was not privy to the planning for this item.
Okay.
Yes.
Then, I suppose through the Deputy Chancellor, can we get the, can you identify who could best answer the, speak to that issue?
The person best answered to answer that question would be Dr. Webb.
Thank you, Deputy Chancellor, and thank you, President. Yes, the particular lead at Laney College, our IT person is Mr. Antoine. I'm going to ask you to come up here very quickly, just very briefly, and indicate the nature of the vendor that we have selected, and requesting the board to approve.
I have to press the button. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. We selected Arrow Hive Network and CBX. We want to regular check and balance. We asked all the vendors, three vendors, to provide us with the equipment that we installed and tested out throughout the college, and it took us a year and a half to testing and shared governance process. We have district-involved, district-involved staff, purchasing was given the portfolio, the project portfolio, district IT was given the project portfolio. We have several meetings at the campuses to just get them involved in this proposal. College of Alameda show up at the meetings and ask the questions, and with all three vendors present, with the faculty, students, and staff. So we come up, we look at all ranges of, from the total cost of ownership, how much it's going to cost us moving forward for the long term, and we looked at technology-wise for all the three vendors, how much, how, how, how much is going to cost us for the implementation? So we come up with the best, we selected Arrow Hive as the best company, and I'm recommending your approval tonight.
I believe we also have a question from Trustee Oliver.
I'd just like to say that, like Lisa Cook brought up earlier, this is a breadth of fish here. It, one, it went through a shared governance process at the college, it was approved at the college council, the main shared governance committee at the college. Also, I mean, from a student's perspective, I can't go, there's not, I can't just go anywhere on campus to use Wi-Fi, and that's a problem. I mean, it's 2015, this is kind of basic Wi-Fi out of campus. You know, good, you know, just, Wi-Fi at a campus is really basic needs for a student, and I can't use it in every classroom. I can't use it the way it's currently set up, I can't, just in any classroom, I can't use it. I have to go and select spots throughout the campus to use Wi-Fi, so this is, this is really a good thing for the college.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver, and there's one additional question from Trustee Gonzalez. You in?
Thank you. Again, I want to reiterate, I have no problem with the substance of it, I'm just looking at the form and trying to understand it. And the other thing that I was noticing was that it says finance review required, but there's no approval from finance. Susan Rennie isn't here, but perhaps his, her surrogate could speak on this question? Is, you know, it's just, I'm being asked as a trustee to vote for a half a million dollar project, I'm just trying to make sure I'm doing my due diligence, that, that's all I'm trying to do, and that the board is doing its due diligence. Thank you. Do we, did finance approve this?
I apologize, I don't have any information on that.
I think what might be helpful is an explanation of what the piggyback contracts are, because those are run through the state, and they're already approved, and there's a competitive selection process. We may, the language that's in this report gives a background on procurement, and it also gives a background on the scope of work, but I think we might need some translation. So Vice Chancellor Caro, could you tell us a bit about the piggyback process and about the scope of work? Oh, I'm getting, no, we don't need that.
Well, I don't need that. I'm just trying to make sure that, so here's what I would propose. I would like to amend the item, to ask the board to approval, approve this pending finance approval. If finance comes through and says, we're all good with this, IT, it sounds like, has said, we're all good with this, the chancellor says, we're all good with this, if we have those approvals, I feel comfortable as a trustee trusting the staff, but right now, I don't have that staff recommendation. So I would like to move to amend this item, that the board approve this item pending finance approval.
Point of clarification, have we established that there's an absence of the approvals, the protocol approvals that are for this item?
It's not on the, it's not on the sheet that we're...
Deputy Chancellor?
We apologize that this is an unclear item, and so we will clarify that. I can't answer your question whether it's been approved by Susan Rennie or not, but we will get that approval.
So I made a motion, and I'm asking for a second.
And I understand that Trustee Riley wants to know the principle, too.
Point of order, well, let's let the Vice Chancellor continue his statement, and then we'll go to the next issue on how we're going to address this matter.
Thank you. To continue, we will get that information for you, for your satisfaction. I apologize it wasn't here, it's not, it is unclear. I will talk with Susan Rennie, I'll do a way to contact her before the end of the week, and also talk with the chancellor as well. So hopefully, that will address your concerns.
And as a follow-up to that, through the Deputy Chancellor, is it possible to put this matter over to the next board meeting without any negative consequence for the critical path for the development of this project at Laney College?
I would have to defer to Antoine.
At this point, we've been waiting on all our quotes right now. Usually, when we delay projects like this, technology is changing, we request a lot of vendors to provide quotes and all that stuff, then we have to go back and adjust that, it's, it's going to be a delay. And I think the piggyback contract was clarified with purchasing, and the funding is there, we checked with the district and district finance, and everybody, everybody was clear, business manager...
Our business manager was involved to look at the funding. We have the funding. We already did the Measure A procurement, and already allocated the money, which was checked against the budget, and the budget is there. So...
We do have a board retreat that is scheduled for the 24th of February, which would be next week. And we do have a very full agenda for the board retreat, but it might be possible, would it be possible to clarify this matter and bring it back?
Absolutely.
Madam President, I've made a, I've made a motion. I'm asking for a second.
I did. I second it.
I'll second it.
All right.
So, then, we have a motion on the floor to amend this matter. And then, the discussion after the motion was made in second, the discussion was also an alternative, which was to put the matter over to the next week. So, first, we'll vote on the motion to amend the item, and then we, do we have a motion?
I would like to ask him to include something into his motion.
So, we have a request to amend the motion that was made by Trustee Gonzalez. And we're in discussion now regarding, after we've had the first and the second. So, Trustee Handy.
Trustee Gonzalez, I'm asked that, if you would include in your motion, that we need information on the principles of this company. There's no information. I tried to check on the internet. There's a concern, but barring that information, then I would be able to support this. But I really do need to know specifically, some more information on the company. So, if we can just add that.
So, I would consider that a friendly amendment, and would accept it with my second.
So, then, let's, for clarity's sake, we have a motion before us to, actually, Nikki, if you would articulate the motion once more, with the amendment.
So, the motion is to approve this item contingent on the finance department's approval of this item, and the provision of the names of the principals, the owners of the company to the board. But there's no condition on the, who the board, who the owners are. It's just that we need to know who the actual owners are. The one condition is that this has finance's approval.
And I also believe that we had a motion from Trustee Riley to, no, okay. So, we have one motion then. One motion. And it's been seconded by Trustee Galasa. All right, then, all in favor of the motion, of the motion to review this matter for finance approval, and for the company owners and principals? Call for the question. Do we have a motion on the floor? All in favor?
And just for clarification, I think Trustee Handy has asked that the information about the owners be provided within a week. I think that's probably acceptable. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add one more thing. All vendors that participated in this project are currently Peralta vendor. So, we went to the vendor database. These people, we did, we do, we did have a, some type of link of business before, in prior, before they bet to the project.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful in providing the information, clarification on the piggyback process.
Yes, we will.
There's some procurement principles that are embedded in this, that may need some explanation.
We will. Thank you.
The next item we have is item number 16. And that is, consider approval of a $750,000 grant with NE Systems Inc. to purchase equipment and services for the Merritt College Science and Allied Health Building project. Do we have any public comment on item 16?
We do not, Madam President.
Do we have any board comment or questions?
Yes, I pulled it.
Okay, Trustee Handy.
All right. I read through this proposal and the background material, and some questions came up for me, and then more questions came up. So, I asked to get a scope of work, so that I could try to better understand this proposal. But I'm just getting it now. So, that's really not enough time, even though I asked earlier in the day, for me to understand what's going on. What I'm understanding here is that, to make this project work, that it's a piggyback, piggybackable. Actually, Mr. Matlock, can I address this to you? Would you mind? Through the chair, I'm sorry.
We would go then through the Deputy Chancellor. So, Deputy Chancellor Gravenberg, Trustee Handy, could you address your question to Deputy Chancellor?
Okay. Is my question okay? As it says here, that this is going to be piggybackable. That's great. But as I go down, as I'm reading through this, it says, "By choosing the CMAS program, it eliminates the three-bid process and ensures competitive pricing in a timely manner." Great. But then, as I get down further, I see that we still had a bid process, or maybe I'm not understanding the chart that I'm reading. It says, "Partner NE Systems", and then it says, "The manufacturers." And then, the first bid is $748,000. The next bid, by JT Tech and Arista, utilizing the same manufacturers, is a $200,000 difference, over $200,000 difference. So, following procedures, we go with the lower bid. But the question for me is, as I read through this, if everyone had the same information, why is there such a discrepancy in the, why is there such a difference in the cost? Did everyone have the same information about going through CMAS and piggybacking? And if that's the case, and they're pulling their figures from there, what is the difference that, that comes up with $200,000? Is one just for equipment, or is one equipment and services? And that's what I asked for the scope. But I still wasn't able to figure that out from my brief look through the scope. And the other thing is, I'm still not clear. I understand the bigger picture, and what it is that we're trying to do. But what I'm not understanding is, who's doing it? Who the principals are in that company? And why such a big difference? And because we're not, we don't have the opportunity to see what the proposal was or what the scope is. But that's a huge difference. So, I'm just trying to understand what's going on. So, I don't really feel comfortable. I feel like I'm voting for something I'm not quite sure about.
Trustee Handy, let me not add to the confusion. Let me have Associate Vice Chancellor Matlock first entertain their questions, and if he'd step to the podium to respond. I think you'd be able to address all of those concerns you have.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Presidents, my colleagues in the community. I'm Calvin Matlock, Associate Vice Chancellor of Information Technology, and I want to address your questions today, and hopefully, I don't confuse you more, or even myself. This project, I think I, it's appropriate that I give you a little background on the process that we went through to get here. The, considering the size, scope, and scale of the Barbara Lee Science and Allied Health Building, being over 110,000 square feet, is one of the largest buildings that we have implemented technology in. I've implemented a 62,000 square foot building before. But looking at this, we had to kind of do this in a few phases. And because of the timeline of opening this building in June 2015, we had to rely upon a competitive awarded government contract. Had, and trying to use program management from within, and not go out and hire someone to assess it, with the limited amount of staff and resources that we had, that's why we went with the piggybackable contract, to be able to meet the timeline. That was the goal, and what we was trying to do. We partnered with, with the DGS, and with purchasing, and with Merritt IT folks. And we looked at this project in five different areas. We looked at the architectural, we looked at the mechanical, the electrical, the structure, and the landscape. And where we come in is the electrical piece, because that's where all the outlets, wall outlets, the ports, the switches, or the network, and the voice go into a building of this magnitude and this size. Now, let me see, can I address this question? And I, and I might need purchasing to help me out, which I don't think anyone is here. And I went over this, and I said, I told my director, I said, "This is going to be confusing to the board, if, you know, the way this is listed." Typically, when you have a piggybackable contract, and I didn't know I was going to get to say this tonight, but typically, on a piggybackable contract, you don't really need but one piggyback, because it's already awarded as a government contract. However, we're required from purchasing to add two. So, what happens is, in this case, you have the discounted price on the first line item that you see, and then you have the list price. So, that, without confusing everything, what you see is the, the, just the list price of equipment, and then you see the discounted price. And you can see the difference of the $200,000. That's why you see the difference, because the list price is just a price. Because you know, in a piggybackable contract, the first manufacturer that gets to the manufacturer, will actually give us the discounted rate. And then, the rest of the, the equipment price, what you're asking about, that's just the list price that comes with the equipment. And as I said before, I probably would need purchasing to kind of explain that whole thing for you, which I don't have tonight with me. Yes.
We are, when I'm looking at this list, when it says, "Partner NE Systems" is one company, and they're the ones who won the bid.
Yes.
And JT, Tech, Arista, NE Systems, is that another company?
Yes. All those, those are three companies that we used to come up with a list price. So, they all gave us the list price. And they're going to get the same price, because we just kind of lumped them in, just to show as reference, on how we can compare the differences versus the vendor that actually won the bid.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's still, it's still a little confusing, because I'm saying, okay, so is it, NE Systems was the first one to get the quote from CMAS? And so, is that why they were able, so, and, but the others, because they didn't get that price first?
Typically, that's the way it works. If the first person that gets the quote, going to get the discount. And that's why you typically don't have, for a piggybackable contract, it's already discounted. So, you typically don't have two and three manufacturers that, because they already know that they're going to get the cheapest price, the first one to get, to get to.
Okay. So, I think, I think I'm getting there.
Okay.
So, that means, once that price is given to the first company, that pricing, that, that contract is bid for, or whatever, if NE Systems goes to CMAS, and they gets that, then that means the next group can't go and get that same quote. Is that...
They could. But the first one that gets there, usually the one that gets the discount.
It gets, oh, okay. Well, now, that, that makes more sense. I was, I was just concerned, because it's such a huge piece. That kind of answers that for me. But I still would like to have more information come, which is, my next question was, they will deliver equipment, but what other costs are included in this contract? Do you know that that amount is, is that where it's going to stay? Or is it, is it not to exceed $750,000? Is that it? Will there be change orders that come back, that bring us back up another $200,000?
I certainly hope not. That's the goal, not to exceed the $750,000. And we've talked to the manufacturer, and they've said they could commit to that price. And that's going to include, that's what, 1,700 ports, that's the wireless access, that's about 74 wireless access points, to make sure all the areas in that building is fully covered.
Yeah. Because what is helpful for us, is when we're looking, especially something, if it's a bid, even if it's, it's that type, is that, when I can see, compare apples to apples, I don't have a breakdown of what's equipment, and what is cost of the...
Yes, of the services.
And so, that's what's helpful, and that's what I was looking for, in terms of the scope of work. What are you, what is it that you're providing, and what is like the cost breakdown? And so, barring any other questions, and also, who the company is. We don't have that information.
Yes.
And that was the same challenge we had with 14. What I'm going to ask is that, I can support this, but I do need those, those questions, if those questions could be answered to the chancellor. And if the chancellor can let us know later or not, if he, if those, if that information is set. Because we're really making a decision kind of blind, blindly here. And I think it's really important to know who the principals are, who is promising us deliverables, based on this amount of money. And this is not a small amount of money.
Yes. And we can get that information. But just for your information also, we use this company as a model, because this is the same company we use to refresh our district network equipment also. So, I don't know what they had researched down on the company at that time, but we're using the same company. And then, the IT folks at Merritt were comfortable with that vendor. And so, we still can get you the background information on that company, if you would like.
Yeah. Because that's, that's where the, the confusion comes in for me, is, okay, is this company, were they already aware of something, were they, did they have a better advantage than the other companies? I don't know one company from the other. But because they previously did work for us, how do we ensure that this process is fair, so it doesn't come back on us? Those are the, the questions that are, as a trustee, that are really on my mind. So, I'm going to throw that back to Deputy Chancellor Gravenberg, and he will fill us in on that. And thank you for your explanation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Associate Vice Chancellor Matlock. First of all, this is instructive for all of us, the chancellor's office staff, to know exactly what you want, so we get it right the first time. So, having said that, future items like this will have all of those information. With respect to this particular item, that should be easily attainable. We should be able to get that to you within a matter of 24 hours. So, we'll be able to provide that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Gravenberg. Move approval of item 16. We have a question from, or a comment from Trustee Oliver.
Yeah, just like item number 14, this item also didn't have finance approval. So, I guess, was the word precedence, you guys did it for the last item, so shouldn't you do it for this item, too?
We have a comment from Vice Chancellor Icaro, and then we have a motion that appears and is brewing with Trustee Gonzalez. Oh, we have a comment from our Vice Chancellor.
General Counsel has just informed me that it does have approval from finance, and some of the board, background board material. Susan Rennie did sign off on this. So, if you haven't received a copy, we can get it to you pretty immediately. So...
Was that the same comment that was coming from...
The same comment, and also, this is part of ongoing project, that the board has already approved, that has gone through the process for, for this particular building, out of which, some of the funding for this particular project is coming out from the district to provide the headgear for Voice Over IP, while the other balance is coming from Merritt College. So, this is Measure A funding, and it is already approved.
Thank you for that procurement primer, brief procurement primer. Trustee Oliver.
I was just bringing up, I mean, just like the last item, it was also signed off on, the last item was signed off, and it has a date. 14 was signed off, has a date by Susan Rennie. 16 has it signed off and a date. It's just the approved box wasn't checked on both. So, just like the last item, this is the same thing.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. And did we have a comment or a motion from Trustee Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Okay. And that was to approve the item? And there was also the information coming back to us within a relatively short period of time. It's been moved in second to adopt approved item 16. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our action calendar for the evening, and concludes our agenda for the evening. We have announcements. Does anyone...
Point, point of order. It's not clear to me, on the informational item that appears on page 16, human resources, sunshining of contract reopeners for negotiations. I'm not, I'm not sure what all of that implies. There's no vote. It's, it's just informational item. We just held a hearing for the sunshining of, of the other union. And I was just wondering why, is there an explanation?
Vice Chancellor Largent has instructed us that the public hearing covered both items. But through the Deputy Chancellor, Vice Chancellor Largent, if you'd like to address that to the group?
Yes, thank you. The public hearing was for the previous sunshining by Local 1021. The item you referred to, Trustee Galasa, is for Local 39, and that is their initial sunshining. So, at the next board meeting, there will be a public hearing for Local 39.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have one announcement, which would be that our Peralta Foundation fundraising dinner is... dinner is March 5th, and we encourage everyone to participate in that event. And are there any other announcements?
Thank you. The next regular board meeting will be held on March 10th here in the district office. There is a board retreat next week. The board wishes the community a happy Black History Month in February and a happy Chinese New Year of the Goat. Daylight savings time begins on Sunday, March 8th, with spring forward and an end to the climate crisis. Moving clocks forward one hour. And the board wishes to send the following condolences and during the meeting, in the memory of Dr. Martina Smokey Wilson, beloved retired Laney faculty member. Madam President, that concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you very much, Trustee Gonzalez. Meeting adjourned.
Okay. Okay, I need my stuff back. That's what I was...